For Board members. To discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests, the board encourages members of the public to attend work session and listen to the discussion, but there's generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. Three items on our agenda, we have the agenda review legislative update and the American Rescue Plan Act. ARPA monies review on page three. So we'll go ahead and get started with the agenda review.
Thank you, Chair Quilam, members of the board. We're just showing what the agenda looks like going forward and just solicit any additional topics that your board might want to engage over the coming weeks. Just because of the time of year right now, we're a little bit less frenzied with the schedule, have a little bit more flexibility. As you know, the departments are in the throes of of the budget process and the legislative succession has also been on ongoing. So so we're not overbooked like we often are. And so if there are topics that you are interested in, again, just let us know. But this is what it looks like right now as we are moving forward. So I'll leave it at that chair and just any any additions, just let us know.
Okay, thank you, County Manager. Does anybody have any questions, comments at this time? Okay. Yeah, really appreciate this opportunity to kind of review what we've got going forward on the rolling agenda and and on the calendar. And yes, as we go forward, if people do have things they want to add or they want to discuss, feel free to do some. We'll move on to the legislative update. I believe we have Ryan Gleason, the State Affairs Manager with CFM Advocates, joining us.
Hey, Commissioners, thanks so much for having me. And Zach Reeves from our team is also here.
Welcome back.
And I apologize, I'm not in a place where I'm able to turn on my camera. So you'll have to you'll see Zach's face this morning, but we're happy to kick off with the legislative update. Anytime.
Great. Monica, did you want to weigh in before we get started?
I defer to Dawn.
Chair Quilam, members of the board, as you know, there's been a lot of activity during the short session. It's we're slowly getting to the finish line here. And so we thought it'd be a good time to have CFM here just to give a little bit of an update to where we are. There's still a number of bills that are outstanding that we continue to watch. And then we will have kind of a legislative wrap up once the session ends so that we can kind of debrief. So I'll just turn it over to CFM and let them give a little bit of an update on what's been happening down in Salem.
Great. Yeah, welcome, Ryan and Zach, and I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. Thanks for having us. We are hopefully two days away from sign and die in the 2024 legislative session. The plan is to wrap up by Friday afternoon. So we've got our the constitutional deadline is Sunday. Most of the big policy pieces that they have tried to accomplish this session are out the door. So you know, as a reminder, those are the governor's housing package, which included about $250 million in various housing investments for infrastructure, for affordable housing, for shelter capacity and some other things, along with some policy pieces that are problematic for some local governments, mainly cities who are more involved in the in the land use process in the housing space. The other big piece of policy was House Bill 4002, which was the Measure 110 rollback. As you all recall, LOC, AOC, the Association of Chiefs of Police and the Sheriff's Association had a came to a recommendation prior to session that essentially rolled possession of a controlled substance back to a misdemeanor A or and included some funding for off ramps for folks who are arrested for drug possession. There was a lot of trials and tribulations and ups and downs and left turns and right turns. And ultimately, the process ended up right back very close to what that initial position was from those groups. So I think having talked to most folks in the city, county, local government space, folks are happy with where the Measure 110 conversation ended up. There will be allocations to all 36 counties to set up these deflection programs that are going to be required. And ultimately, a lot of the enforcement in terms of how this rolls out is going to be determined on a county by county basis. There. So the possession of a controlled substance will be a miss was called a misdemeanor U, so unquantified, unknown, on something. But functionally, it works very similar to a misdemeanor A with some off ramps for folks who are are arrested for these crimes, they have a chance to go into what's called a deflection program to keep that charge off their record if they enter into some treatment program. So more to come there, but it's I think the legislature did a pretty tremendous job of navigating a really tricky issue. I know it was a hard vote for a lot of folks, but ultimately, from a local government perspective, I think it ended in a a pretty advantageous place. So Ryan, I know is the expert on this, and I kind of I'm out over my skis at this point, so I will let her chime in if she's got anything else to fill in on the on that.
No, I think you did a great job, Zach. Commissioners, just two things to flag in the accompanying budget measure, which is where they made all the investments for 4002. Clatsop County did receive $500,000 for behavioral health bed capacity for SUD treatment beds and detox beds. So that is money that's going to Clatsop Behavioral Health Care, which is fantastic. And then there was also $10 million allocated. I know we had talked with you all about the jail-based medication for opioid use disorder. And so they did fund that program, $10 million to the Criminal Justice Commission. So two kind of highlights out of the accompanying budget measure.
So those are the two kind of big, oh, sorry, Commissioner Thompson, I see.
Yes, your question.
Thank you. Remind us, if you would, Zach and Ryan, about the provisions for juvenile justice in in all of this. Can there's been so much going on, I can't hold it all, but I thought maybe you two had a better grasp of how we're going to address juvenile juveniles in this.
I'm gonna defer to Ryan on that and see if she has some insight.
My understanding, Commissioner, and I will follow up and get you a better answer to this question. My understanding is that they still fall, you know, within the the framework, but they would not be there. Some specific provisions that I don't have in front of me that they would not be sentenced to OIA or anything like that, that that treatment really is the first option. But I will follow up and get a more detailed answer to you and make sure the rest of the Commissioners have that same information. And then I'll just flag that Representative Conrad had been pushing a work group, task force to look at youth behavioral health. That is something that he's been very interested in. So within that email that I send to you all, I will include some information about his task force that did move forward, but I don't have the details in front of me on that.
Thank you so much. It's been raised as an issue, and there's so much going on that it's hard to track it all. I really appreciate your capable support.
Thanks for sure.
And Donna, there are other or any anybody, any specific bills that folks have questions on? I know the two, Commissioner Thompson, that you've been tracking are 1575 and 4056. I guess the guessing that's why your hand was raised. 4056 passed out with the dash eight amendments, which AOC was neutral on. It essentially requires consultation with counties as that process moves forward. So I think we ended up in a decent space there. 1575, which is the duty to defend a bill, which shifts some of the legal liability from certain design professionals to the local governments that they're contracting with. That unfortunately was voted out of committee, the Senate or the House Rules Committee this morning, so it looks likely to pass this session. It does have a sunset, and there was some concern that, you know, if this does have a significant financial impact on counties, then there's going to be some interest in revisiting it. A little frustrating, you know, it seems kind of backwards that we should be protecting counties before we do this. But, you know, that was decision was made above our pay grade. So Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. And I don't want to whine about this, but Senator Przyansky was very much for this bill. The reason it causes concern to me, we're about to have a housing boom. This is absolutely the wrong time to put counties more at risk for extra charges, fees and costs, particularly due to the fact that I'm told, and I don't even know if this is true, but somebody that's more expert than I said, it takes eight years for the real design flaws to show up in housing. So there's a long term issue with all this and the burden to come on taxpayers. I don't know, couldn't do anything to stop it, tried, but.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Poyoga.
Thank you. And not to back, I was trying to get back to that 110 before we left. The revisions and I see Kelly is on on the caller, the Zoom call as well and Monica. And we met with PSEC last week, and I know from the DA and the judge's perspective, there's some a lot of challenges, even with this, you know, the revision juvenile, as well as provisions that, you know, from the judge's standpoint, make it kind of like we're status quo in terms of enforcement. So can we get more clarification on that?
Chair Quilam, we have Kelly Broughton on too, if you'd like to have Kelly get a little overview.
Yes, absolutely. Kelly.
Thanks. Commissioner Thompson, in reference to your question specifically to juvenile justice. To start from square one, juvenile justice wasn't wasn't a consideration at all in 110. They didn't really think about the overall impacts, which there has been a significant impact. And as far as as far as the fixes, I don't I do not believe we got any actual language. There is no reference to the it just says person, it doesn't say youth. So there's not nothing really specific in 4002 that is helpful other than the not committing to OIA, which historically this county has never sent anyone to OIA just for drug charges. That that is the fact that they put that in there is is a mystery to me because I don't even know statewide over the years if there's been more than a handful specifically sent with only drug charges to a correctional facility or into a community placement, let alone through the Oregon Youth Authority. We typically handle those things locally. And so there was there was some language that was that I guess was was attached on the floor, but nothing in writing. Our hope is that we just are allowed to do things the way we've always done them, which is handle things on a local level, access to treatment, utilize what we what we can to try and get kids into long term or residential treatment if needed. Through the principle of least restrictive placement, that's been our that's been a motto that we've used forever to use the least restrictive placement option available. We just ultimately want to make sure that we can get treatment to kids so that we prevent further penetration in the adult system. That's why juvenile justice exists. So the hope is that even with 110 going on, Commissioner Thompson, we have been receiving those referrals and we've been handling them informally, and we've been getting them. And the treatment we can, knowing that if they refuse to do it, there's nothing we can do about it. But we're at least allowing them an opportunity and most take us up on it.
Thank you, Kelly. And I should mention Kelly is the Juvenile Department Director. Appreciate your comments. I see we have Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Bangs both with raised hands. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that you're doing and continue to do. This is highly significant in those in the lives of those youth. Are you able to capture data so that we can demonstrate unmet need if we do get other funding opportunities? Do we are? It's kind of the programmatic equivalent of a shovel ready project. Are we ready to go if there's a funding opportunity with data?
We are constantly adding data every day. So any report that comes in, we put that in our system anytime we make contact. As much data as as we can generate, we we do our best to to capture whatever we can. So and it's and there's someone in our office that can drill down to whatever we want to find. So that data is never an issue because we have a statewide system.
Thank you, Kelly. Commissioner Bangs.
Good morning. Thank you so much. I am just curious, is there a nonprofit or an advocacy group in the state of Oregon that we can, I don't know, attach to a little bit? I just see that drug abuse in pediatrics is often associated with mental health concerns. And I it's a huge gap in our state and I I just I don't know, is there a way that we can circle back for our community next year during the long session? Kind of along these topics and and see if we can try to elevate our our juvenile, our youth. Because I I'm just not seeing it. I've looked around and I've looked for advocacy groups. I know California has some some great ones, but I I'm not seeing it in Oregon, and I was just curious.
Was that question specific to me or to?
I mean, if you know of of anybody, but also, you know, to the group as a whole. I I feel like this is a giant gap and our kids are just falling into it.
Yeah, so historically, the juvenile system has been the the catchall, right? So we end up, we end up with them. If we don't have services local, then the state through the Oregon Youth Authority ends up being, you know, the the catchall. As far as advocacy groups, I'm not 100% sure who that would be. One of the challenges when when ballot measure 110 passed was we'd never really had a really robust treatment. Providers, I guess you should you could say statewide. And when 110 occurred, a lot of those nonprofits, they had to pivot because the referral base dried up when there was no more. I guess you could say coerced or forced treatment either by a judge or by the juvenile department for compliance, even the adult system, right? And so you, as a nonprofit, you have to pivot because referrals equals revenue. And so once those guaranteed referrals dried up and it became voluntary, surprise, most people wouldn't volunteer to go into treatment. So we're having to now rebuild nonprofits and staffing levels, which if 4002, we don't know the impact yet, whether or not, you know, the adult system is going to be able to figure out the deflection and all that fun stuff. And I'm not sure exactly, you know, how our local presiding judge is going to want to handle what we're going to do with juveniles. It's all still kind of up in the air. The Directors Association is also busily trying to figure out how we're going to handle this. But the hope is ultimately that we continue to understand that typically with juvenile drug use, whether it be, you know, and I'm talking not talking specifically about like experimental, I'm talking more about those who would be genuinely addicted. Figuring out and understanding that it was never about punishment, it's about turning over those rocks, figuring out what the trauma is, figuring out what the what may be the mental health concerns are. And that's what we were able to do when we could compel them to treatment is we could dive deeper, get into that trauma and hopefully have a better outcome.
Well, I appreciate your comments because you actually connected a dot for me. In my search for for advocacy and nonprofits, I had noticed that a number had closed in 2023. And so this really shows me why they ended up closing was and I without being part of the, I guess, industry, I would never have connected those two dots. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
No problem. Chair, if I can just chime in one more thing to the Burn Group, we presented on that a couple of weeks ago. And one of the things that was identified through this group is that we we do need to kind of figure out some solutions for our juvenile population. And so that is one of the things that we're going to be working on is the sequential intercept mapping around drug use, prevention, treatment and mental health for youth. And so that is a project that we're going to be moving forward with, which will help identify some of those gaps and needs that you're referring to, Commissioner Bangs, and what we might be able to do locally to help provide more services.
Thank you, Assistant County Manager, for clarifying and adding that. I see Commissioner Thompson, you still had a question?
I did. And and thank you, Assistant County Manager, because we're carrying forward a train of thought here about our about making more robust whenever possible, our community response and then carrying it forward. To to what extent the County Board of Commissioners needs to be involved with this, I'm not certain. Because I know that this burn group exists. I'll I'll tell you, I think the appetite for hearing about this and for involving the Commissioners very high. And whatever we can do to support your work, you know, I'm thinking of going, I go to the ElGec and I hear about this a lot in other counties. So I'd urge you to keep us informed and involved however possible as we go forward together. And I I appreciate the, I would say, the uniformity of our concern in this regard.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We have any other questions, comments? Anything more from Rianne or Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, just real quick, back to something that Kelly said a couple of minutes ago in terms of the local control. I think what I was I was, this was described to me as essentially it's going to roll out 36 different ways across the state. And so I think there will be, there is a very contrary to a lot of the stuff that the state passes there. This is very heavily dependent on local control and local enforcement. And and so, you know, I think it will be, it will very much play out 36 different ways across the state.
Any other questions or comments? Well, Rianne Gleason and Zach Reeves from CFM Advocates, thank you very much for our update. Appreciate all you're doing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll move on to the next item, which is the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA and the monies and the plans and what we've done with that money so far. And I'll go ahead and is this going to be County Manager or Assistant County Manager?
I'm going to go ahead and present to all of you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. So as you all know, we received these ARPA fundings approximately $7.8 million. And we came before you back in 2021 when we received these monies and kind of presented you with this draft concept. And we've come before you on an annual basis to kind of share any changes and updates in addition to coming before you every time that we have created a funding agreement with an agency to provide these different types of services. And so we're coming before you again to just kind of share with you what has already happened as well as some proposed updates. Because as we receive information from you all as a commission, as well as community stakeholders, staff, we we kind of make these updates and figure out how best to use these monies. So that way, we're really seeing a change in our community as effectively as we can. Those $7.8 million seems like a lot of money in the grand scheme of things. It's really not that much when there's a lot of work to be done. Um, so that being said, I've had Teresa pull up on the on the screen for me kind of where we're at with this. And so this current fiscal year, we've provided a lot of the ongoing funding for some agencies such as the economic development to SBDC as well as the childcare navigation. We've also provided funding for navigation center support. The two agencies that have been providing those services are Helping Hands and Lifeboat Services. And then we have allocated in this current fiscal year $100,000 for inclement weather shelter. At this point in time, we've only distributed $50,000 of that. And that was recently in the last couple of months to Helping Hands for the inclement weather shelter down in Seaside to provide assistance to to the flooding that was happening in the Mill Pond camping area. And then some of the other nonprofit support that we've been providing is specific to the homeless liaison position that we contract with CCA for. And then emergency shelter support systems, both CCA and Lifeboat Services are receiving emergency shelter funding through the emergency order. But we have been providing additional shelter support funding to Helping Hands and the Harbor. And we continue to provide mental health crisis response funding to CBH. So that way they can have staff for the crisis response in coordination with law enforcement. And then we've also been having some additional mental health services in our jail through telehealth contracting with a counselors in for our adults in custody. And the affordable housing that 125,000 is the funding that was provided in support of the pre development work going on with Owens Adare Two through NOHA. And then the $100,000 that we have is for the Housing Administration support that we've had staff internally. Alyssa specifically has been providing technical assistance to to the work that the county is doing in regards to housing, but also providing that staff support to assist the cities as well on some projects and then at the legislative level too. Going down, we've been investing a lot in various infrastructure for the county. So investing in public health infrastructure, we've been continuing to provide ongoing support there as well as the Jewel School Based Health Center, that amount has been able to be reduced because we were able to contract with another provider to to take that project on. And ongoing work around the county facility space planning, trying to work with our architects at Sierra. So that way we can better utilize the spaces and the buildings that we have for some space constraints constraints that we're all working through. And we have one significant change that we've made, and a lot of this has to do with both numbers three and four. So we realized some savings around the broadband rural internet work going on. both numbers three and four. So we realized some savings around the broadband rural internet work going on because we've been working closely with our partners at Charter and Century Link who received ARDOF funding. So while we have put some money into that specifically around a walkout that was recently done, much of that infrastructure work is going to take place by those agencies. So utilizing those savings, we have proposed some changes for the 2425 fiscal year, which includes approximately a million dollars for facility improvements. As you all know, we have aging infrastructure in our buildings. They've been around for a number of years. And some of the issues that we're dealing with are specifically around our elevators and needing to have some significant modifications made to those elevators in both the 800, the 820 and the courthouse. And so having elevators is essential for ADA access. And so reviewing the uses, this is an eligible use for ARPA funds. And so we're proposing that next fiscal year, we pay for some of those capital improvements using these funds. Other areas that we've been able to provide some support, as you're all aware, the situation regarding the water infrastructure out at Evergreen Acres. Your board approved the $50,000 for the system operator to, to do some necessary upgrades. And then there's just some additional costs that the county had incurred around buying bottled water and, and having some systems out there for them. Excuse me. There is an additional $50,000 under resiliency that we're proposing this year and that is specific to an ambulance services consultant coming in and helping us identify some of the, the the times for the, the response time zones for the ambulance services agreement and producing a new map based on those response times. And so we're proposing that a consultant be hired to assist emergency management with that work. Going down into section four, as I mentioned, we've seen some savings through the ARDOF funds for the broadband rural internet. And then we're continuing to do work on the biodigester feasibility. We have matching grant funds and we're still hoping that we might be able to have a forgivable loan to pay for all of that, but we have set aside ARPA funds to, to pay for the matching portion if necessary. And your board had approved the $150,000 as well as the $250,000 to the Napa School District and City of Warrenton for both of them to be able to make some much needed infrastructure upgrades specific to the school being a, a site that is necessary for community emergency response and Warrenton being able to make some necessary upgrades to their wastewater system infrastructure. So that way they can support the large development that is looking to go in out at Fort Point. And then last but not least, we have additional funds that we're requesting in this current fiscal year as well as next fiscal year to support some of the necessary infrastructure upgrades that have to happen out at the Westport Sewer District. As you're all aware, this is a, a county service or the county service district that is fee-based. But there is a significant amount of infrastructure improvements that need to happen because that is aging infrastructure as well. And so we do still have funds set aside for contingencies. So as, as things continue to come up, we'll continue to recognize where there might be savings from some of the proposed projects, but then also other projects that might come up along the way that we would be able to still provide some funding for. And so I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have regarding any of this or any, anything specific about what we have already provided support to.
Well, thank you, Assistant County Manager. And I think you, you started off by saying, you know, $7.8 million seems like a lot of money. It's not that much money in the grand scheme of things, but I'm really proud of the way that we've applied this money throughout the county. It's been very effective and impactful in all the right ways. And I appreciate the work of our, our staff, our county manager's office, and of course this board. The way that we've been flexible and we've identified needs as they've arose and been able to, to put funding towards them. I guess my question would be, as we pass the deadline of the end of the year, 2024, you have the two years in order to spend the funds. But as these, maybe some of these projects don't go forward, what flexibility do we have to be able to apply that to something else? Once, once this deadline passes and a couple of these projects maybe don't go forward, what can we do about that to make sure that it gets, gets spent?
So they, so they are continuing to make regular updates to the the ARPA funding agreements, but while it is necessary to be obligated by December 2024 and we, and then we do have the additional two years, by, by having this funding concept in place, the, the the idea of where these funds have been obligated to is going to be kind of consistent. We, we have the, the three areas, there's four areas, but we've designated three areas specific that we are obligating these funds to. We might not have funding agreements in place, but the obligation to spend those dollars on something specific is, is what this concept is providing. Dawn, do you want to add more to that?
Chair, members of the board, what I would say is that as we get into the end of the calendar year, which would be the end of of the obligation period, what, what you've seen is, is really much more definition and much more confidence in some of these projects so that we can obligate them and actually get them done. One of the biggest changes, which is why we are here at, as Monica mentioned, was the was the rural broadband dollars. Cause we had originally assumed that the county was gonna have to cede some of the rural underserved community infrastructure. And it just so happens that well Charter and Lumen, who is also Century Link, applied for and received large ARDOF allocations that are dealing with those underserved areas. And so it alleviated some of the commitment that the county would have otherwise made. We have set aside some money that may hit some of those really difficult to reach homes and businesses, but we're not even sure what those are yet because both Charter and Lumen are still working on their, on their infrastructure plan. So so I think to, to the question, Chair, is that we, a lot of the projects we're putting on the table now are ones that we will get done by that two-year extended period. So.
Thank you, County Manager. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Webb, Commissioner Thompson first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate, as you did, Chair, that this is excellent work on staff's part to, I would say broadly disseminate in needed areas all over the county. I, I would ask, are we comfortable that going forward, we can maintain the level of service that we've achieved now? Or is there a further unmet need that we've incurred by virtue of funding these particular projects?
Do you, do you want me to speak, Dawn? I can, go ahead.
Just to make sure, I, I understand the question, Commissioner. I think what the question is, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, is that we have invested in some programs and services which increase service levels for the time that we've invested ARPA and whether those will be able to continue once the ARPA dollars are no longer available. Is that close?
That strikes me as a better way to say what I'd ask. Thank you.
So I think what my answer is, Commissioner Thompson, members of the board, is that anytime you get one-time money and you're making priority investments into service areas, there is a risk that that one-time funding will end and the need continues. What I will say is that we're focused right now on a lot of the kind of physical infrastructure investments that will stand the test of time. And those areas that we have been investing some of the ARPA dollars in, which were underfunded areas, are now areas that the state has taken a more prominent funding role. And I'm thinking about a lot of the homeless funding and then funding now that may go into alcohol and drug treatment and mental health. And so there's always a risk that there will be an erosion in, in some of those service levels moving forward. And certainly a lot of that's gonna depend upon what the county's financial situation is and whether or not we have any flexibility to contribute general fund dollars to some of those critical safety net services. And I think the jury is out on that question, just, just because we don't know what's gonna happen. You know, with our financials as we move forward. So so we're, we're, we're trying to limit some of those impacts now by really in, investing in some of the hardcore infrastructure needs of the community. Thank you.
I would also ask that this information be shared with the members of the Budget Committee. We've got some continuing members and some new members, and I think for them to see this information would help prepare them to participate more effectively in our budgeting process. Thank you.
And I'll touch on that after we get through all the questions and, and just share, cause this is, we do have this information on our county website as well. So that way the public knows too. But, but I will touch on that after Commissioner Webb goes.
Okay, thank you. Assistant County Manager will go to Commissioner Webb.
Excuse me, that's, that's why I, I don't have my camera on because all I'm doing is sitting here coughing. And I don't think that that's anything anybody else wants to have to share with me. My question is, was there ever any consideration about whether or not we would be able to use some of these funds as we move toward a common 911 system?
So we have looked at some of the emergency preparedness resiliency. And so in, I believe it was last fiscal year, 2223, some of that $75,000 was used to do the consolidation study. And so we have looked at, or we have utilized some of these funds for that purpose. But in regards to the infrastructure aspect, that would require a significantly greater amount of funds than available.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
If I might add to that, Chair, members of the board is one of our federal asks is for infrastructure support for the 911 system, which is the hard infrastructure piece. And so we are advocating for that and that specific request had, as you can imagine, very enthusiastic support from all of our fire and, and our police agencies in the county. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, County Manager. And thanks for the question, Commissioner Webb. Do we have any other questions or comments?
So if there aren't any other questions, Teresa, if you would please pull up the website. And so to, to your comment, Commissioner Thompson, we will most definitely share this information with the Budget Committee. But I also want to share with you, so if you all get questions from your constituents in regards to where this information can be found, this is on the county's website. And so if you go under County Government and the Special Projects tab and you scroll down and you continue to scroll down, it, it kind of talks about as you, I work too fast. It, it continues to talk about top one American rescue. I think there's just delay in the website. But anyways, as you scroll down to the very bottom of the page, it provides all kinds of information just about the ARPA dollars, federal guidelines and all of that. And then it gets to the very bottom where it is specifically this spreadsheet that we previously had shown. But because of the, the ARC GIS system, it's a little bit different formatting. And so keep going almost to the bottom. Right there. And so you can hover over this and you're able to see kind of just what we were showing. So the fiscal years are designated by color and then it kind of shows how much funding was provided in each of those fiscal years, specific to the different types of services that are being provided. So this is information that is out there, but we will also share with the Budget Committee because some of this will appear in the budget process when we're going over the ARPA fund. So happy to answer any other questions you all might have.
Any other questions at this time for the Assistant County Manager? This is really good work and really appreciate the communication, getting it out on the webpage and having all of this available. Very important. And again, I reiterate, we've done a lot of good things with this money. So it, it really has been a collaborative effort and we're glad to be helping nonprofits in our community and, and, and others that really need it. And this really was a, a really well-done presentation and appreciate the communication, Assistant County Manager.
Thank you all.
Do we have anything else at this time? That's our last item on the agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Have a good rest of your Wednesday.